Pam Trees and Commissioner Jerry Willie and myself, Catherine Harrington. Do we have any commissioners on Zoom?
We do not, Madam Chair.
Okay, so Commissioner Roy Rogers is absent.
He must be looking at campaign signs or something.
So the first item on our agenda is Board and Leadership Communication. Do the commissioners have anything they wish to share?
Just a couple of things. One is, I want to note the passing of a legislative giant. I think we've all heard about Representative Mitch Greenleg. Makes me realize that I've been around for a while, too, because I remembered when he came to me looking for my endorsement back in 2002. We met at the Blue Moon Diner and we talked about different things. I never could get him convinced about my ideas about annexation and the appropriate role of urban services with respect to city providers, but oh, well. Mitch never got that. But he sure got a lot of other things. And of course, we're going to be involved in appointing his replacement. And again, in so many ways, he's such an incredible public servant, and I can't help but think that if he knew his time was coming, he wanted to make it at a time that would make it easier for all of us to fill his spot.
Right.
Obviously, by tonight, we'll know who our six-month replacement will be for that position. Other thing is, I just haven't, don't like to talk about this, maybe appropriate talk about the politics here, but I just wanted to note that I feel like I'm going to win no matter what happens, because if I win, the Senate seat, that'll be great. If I don't, I'm going to look forward to all the other worlds out there outside the world of politics. There is a lot out there, I know. And so either way, I'm looking forward to certainty tonight and know where my life is going from here. So that's it.
Thank you, Commissioner Scowton. Welcome, Commissioner Rogers.
Thank you.
Are there any other board communications?
I thought you might be working on your signs this morning.
Last night.
I have a couple.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I have a couple of things. Since the Get Moving 2020 Task Force has wrapped up, I'm now re-engaging with community action organizations, so as a board member, because I was temporarily suspended, so to speak. And I'm going to be back at that, so if there's any issues that you want communication about, please let me know. The other thing that through my, through my work outside of the commission, I'm aware of PPP that is still available to our businesses. There's quite a bit of money still left. And I shared with Alex this morning, and we're posting what banks are accepting loans from non-customers, which is a big issue for those who have been applying for it in the past. So I just wanted to get that public service announcement out there for our businesses.
Yeah, and I think it's, this last week, of course, we began to re-engage with some of our committees and boards, so it was nice to reach out in our first COLPAK meeting for several months, and at the same time, our PSCC meeting, our Public Safety meeting on Friday. So it's good to reconnect with all of that group. And shoot, there wasn't enough on my calendar already, so you might as well put them back on and we'll get going. But no, it's, it's good to do that.
Commissioner Rogers, did you have anything to contribute?
A couple of things. One, you always are asking what's happening at the WCCC. Yesterday, we talked about the funding major update, nothing startling you haven't heard before, with Andy Shaw and Craig Dirksen, Roadshow, we've heard that. Also, we talked about the emergency transportation routes. That's done about every 10 years, except hasn't been done recently for about 15. It's kind of interesting there. Case of big earthquake, wherever it's going to be driving, how that's working. And then at the end of the meeting, I got a little more colorful in terms of mayors asking where we were with our $104 million and how they might participate in that process. So that was not a lot to tell them, because we're still in the formation, because we had a meeting yesterday on that very topic. So that's new. Thursday morning is the J-PAC. Not a lot to tell you there. Then on Friday, we have the 2017 meeting on the transit. Very little money that we're dealing with. Deanna Palmer is the chair of that committee, by the way. So it's always interesting to participate there. And then tonight, there's something interesting going on. I'm not sure what it is. Isn't there something? And last time I saw, you were talking about a good representative who unfortunately passed away. And the last time I saw him was at your wedding.
Ah.
And he was sitting with Bill Kenner, and I was kidding him about being a strange bedfellow. He was a very right Republican, and I would call, you know, you represented maybe a left-leaning person. And they said, it's almost like big-time wrestling, you know? We do that in the House, but we get together and we're friends afterwards. They were good friends. It was really nice and refreshing to see that we had some human relationships there. Anyway, that's the last time I saw him.
I know, I know my spouse really enjoyed working with Bill Kenner.
Yeah. That's all I have.
Okay, I'll contribute a couple of things. So there are some misunderstandings being circulated, particularly amongst our mayors regarding the Washington County Corona, Coronavirus Relief Funds. They seem to have the impression that I, as chair, am leading the board effort, which is not the case. Commissioner Rogers and I are each serving on the task force to bring recommendations to this full county commission. Last week, after our work session, the principles were updated based upon your feedback. And that information, the principles, as well as the next steps process, was shared with the mayors and I believe the county administrators through our CAO, Mr. Rhodes. And I didn't double-check, but it was supposed to be shared with our service districts as well, and Elizabeth is shaking her head. So that information is available. It's certainly public as well as it was, the first draft was in our work session packet from last Tuesday. And we'll continue, the task force continues to do its work, particularly with staff, to estimate the Washington County costs and to see what dollars are available for use throughout our Washington County communities. So we're, we're working apace on that. Then the other misconception is that the decision to reopen Washington County and put an application forward to the governor following the prerequisites, as we well know, that continues to be a decision guided by the public health science and the data. We are very well-versed in the fact that the state prerequisites changed the responsibility for contact tracing, the monitoring, the investigation, and that our staff has done a terrific job of securing the resources that they need. We had the emergency board meeting on Friday to approve those contracts. Our staff continues to work very hard to get the new resources onboard, and we'll hear more of that during our COVID update later on the agenda. It isn't a simple matter of us taking a vote on the board and then deciding to reopen. This isn't a political matter. This is a public health matter. So I do know that one of our colleagues has gotten pressure from various mayors to help ensure that there is at least a 3-2 political vote to reopen, and that's not the way this process works, folks. So I realize that there is tremendous angst in our community. There is a lot of fear, fear of the unknown, fear of the state of the economy. There is a lot of pain. A lot of folks are in economic hardship, have been feeling, there has been a lot of expression of discrimination and stigmatization. It's just pretty intense. And I would ask folks to please hang in there, think of your fellow human being, and do, do what you can do to be kind and gentle with one another. Unfortunately, we don't have a vaccine. We're all figuring out a new normal. We grieve, or at least I grieve, for the way things used to be, when we were able to pretty much travel carefree. And I know I've been learning a lot about how many surfaces I touch, and I'm very, much more aware of that than I have in the past, but I still have to work on it. So I hope we'll all hang in there with one another. We've got one another, and that's a tremendous resource. And just hang in there, folks. We're getting through it. So I think that's it from board communication for today. How are we doing with leadership communication? Why don't we go to that? Who would like to go first of the three of you?
I'll go first, if you don't mind. So there was big news last, earlier this week, that the judge in Baker County enjoined the governor's declaration of emergencies, finding that it was a public health emergency and that it was extended past the 28 days. Last night, the Oregon Supreme Court stayed the enforcement of the injunction, and they're expecting briefings this Friday. And at least from our review of the judge's order in Baker County, we think there's problems with it, and likely the Supreme Court will overturn that and reinforce the, the emergency declaration. Also, I'd like to pull Item 5A, the Steve Rhodes contract. That's a, there are some technical issues with that, and we'll bring that back as soon as possible. And that's it.
Quick question on that. I thought I had the most recent, yeah, sorry, I thought I had the most recent information on my emails, which came yesterday, but I don't have a 5A. So you can take, Alan, you can take 5A out, because I didn't have it anyway.
I don't have it.
It's on the board agenda, not the work session.
On the board agenda. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm on work session. Okay, sorry, I was on the wrong agenda.
I have a couple items. One item to remove from the agenda is Item 5B. Since that's action the board has already taken, it was queued up both ways, and we missed pulling the plug on, on this one. The second one related to that, because of the order of the work session, I'd like to bring this up now. We were going to bring it up under the COVID update, but it comes after the board meeting. We really want the discussion before the board meeting.
Would you like to switch the order of items on the work session? Because I don't think we have to have Item 3 before our meeting today.
Alan, are you okay with that?
Absolutely.
Okay, let's, please.
So we'll move whichever item you want up?
Move 5, Item 5 up to 3, please. That'll allow us to go through the issues there.
Let's do that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And then I have people here from elections. If you would like to ask any questions regarding that, we can also have them available at the board meeting.
I would like to have the election staff at the board meeting for an announcement with regard to how the ballots will be counted and results will be posted. I don't need to do that now, I don't, I want to make sure that the public has the opportunity to hear, particularly since Clackamas County is going to be doing the first count at 8:00 and releasing those results, but apparently, they won't be doing, excuse me, another post of results until tomorrow afternoon. And anything else that elections would like to ensure that we have the benefit of?
Okay.
If you have any questions right now, and you want to have the CAO bring our elections team up now, that's fine, too.
I do have one question, and I don't know the answer. I don't expect an answer just this instant, but it was pointed out to me, and I don't know how they do things in Multnomah County as far as their library system is concerned, but apparently there, they, they were still making use of the libraries as sites for drop boxes, and we, with a couple of notable exceptions, are not. And of course, I think that's putting more pressure on the remaining sites, maybe particularly Murray, the Murray East Building. And I was wondering if, if what Multnomah County, it might be something different about how they run their libraries, or how their, how their facilities are set up, and if we might be able to learn lessons from them and be able to, to what we normally do, which is to use our library sites as Dropbox sites.
Right. So thank you for allowing us to be here again this morning. So I just want to give you some update on terms of numbers, in terms of ballots, right off the bat. So as of yesterday and the evening, we had collected 125,225, which is about just shy of 34%. So we're very much in line with the stats that we had back in 2016 as well. In terms of the ballots being counted in Washington County, we do not anticipate changing our process any different than what we've done in the past. And so typically, we'll start our first count at 8:00, and then we ensue with additional statistics on the hour thereafter until we're done counting. And so we do anticipate that our staff will be there until we're done counting. So it could be, hopefully, it will be before midnight. If not, we'll be there until we're done. And, go ahead.
Okay. Commissioner Scowton, I wanted to respond to the library. We have been discussing with the libraries and their process is whether or not they will have their drop site, drop boxes open. And they already told us from the beginning that they were not. They do not want any books returned. So we felt that maybe some voters might still try to shove something in their boxes. So we've arranged for them to have a Tuesday night, tonight, they're going to make their rounds at the drop sites that are closed, that we have used. And if they find any, we're honoring those ballots, they're going to come and deliver it to us. So, but Multnomah is requesting people to use their drop site. Our county library is not opening their drop site, their box, or whatever they call those. So that was the whole.
Book returns?
Yes, thank you, I couldn't think.
And, and you are right in pointing out, Commissioner Scowton, that in Multnomah County, the libraries, all of the library sites are run by the county, whereas here, all the library sites, with the exception of the West Slope Library, are run either by the cities or by nonprofits. So it's a slightly different setup. And because of the COVID-19, all of the book returns have been closed. So some of them are also physically closed, right? They have a barrier up with the, the book return. So it, with COVID-19, things have been much more complicated. I appreciated that you came to our work session last week to review the efforts that you've made, the extra days that the elections office has been open for folks that need help with their ballots, or folks that want to vote at the elections office. I would like to apologize to you as well, personally, as well as to everyone on the team. I understand that, Mickey, you went to the East County building yesterday, and that people treated you very harshly, and I sincerely apologize for that. You've been a dedicated public servant, and you and the team have tried to do everything that you can to make sure that people can deliver their ballots. I really appreciate that the CAO took my call late Saturday evening, when I was alerted to the fact that the banner, there was a banner on the building, as well as a sandwich board, to let folks know that elections has moved. And apparently, that was discouraging some folks from getting out of their cars and using the ballot drop slot in the lobby of the building. The team acted very quickly, and when I went to the building on very early Sunday afternoon, there was a steady stream of people coming in, returning their ballots, and I didn't see any problems whatsoever. So I thank the CAO and the team for following up on that. But there has been quite a tirade of anger, particularly on social media, with regard to the county's support for elections. I don't think it's warranted. These are incredibly unique times, and we've needed to make sure that people have the opportunity to return their ballots safely, as well as for our staff to be safe. So I thank you very much for the efforts that you have made.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to echo that, too, because I thought it was very good that we had postage paid on the ballots as well. I generally drop mine off at, at the local ballot box, it just kind of like feels like I'm voting. But this year, I dropped it in the mailbox, because again, it's just a convenience thing. So these people, I guess, maybe they feel stronger than I do, that they have to drop it in the ballot box, feel like they're voting. But we provided a very easy option, so I congratulate you for whoever come up with that idea. It was good.
State Legislature.
Yeah, that's good.
Question. Yeah, Mickey, great job over many, many years. Been a pleasure to work with you since I've been here. Posting of results, in the old days, everybody was burning up your, burning up your phone line and calling you incessantly, particularly candidates. Do you want to do a little public announcement right now, how you're going to be posting those, so that people can see those? Are you going?
We're going to have her come. We're going to have her come at 10:00.
I knew that.
And do that on camera, too.
I didn't know she wanted a second bite.
You mean in addition to what they already said, that it's going to be the regular process every hour, starting at 8:00 PM?
Right, in the station.
Yeah.
We do upload to the Secretary of State's Election Night Reporting Site, and all the counties do report to that site. And it, I believe on the corner, it does tell you when, well, we used to have it, where the next posting would be. I'm not sure if that's still visible. I think, I really don't know. That's Secretary of State's website, but we will continue to do our hourly posting.
And if you were to guess, because this will be, and you could say this at 10:00, but what would be your second count, do you think, really? Just a guess, wild guess. That's what everybody's looking at.
9:00.
9:00. 9:00 PM.
So it should be done hourly. So we would say 9:00.
For sure. Okay. Thanks.
Are there any other questions that we could address? I want to thank the board also for your support during this time of COVID, because we know it's been extremely difficult on so many levels, and so I am thankful that you're here to support the election staff. So thank you.
Thank you for ensuring our constituency the opportunity to, to vote. So much appreciated.
Thank you.
Anything else, Mr. Rhodes? No? Okay. Thank you. Clean Water Services.
Good morning. So on your table is a Purbi council that Mark Jockers prepared for you.
I didn't get one.
You didn't get one?
Chair Harrington, members of the board, I wanted to point out to you that Ken Williamson, who's the director of our, of course, I neglected to give the chair a copy, sorry. Ken Williamson, who's the director of our Research and Innovation Center, will be a guest on a congressional briefing on Thursday afternoon, Thursday morning here, talking about the tracking of COVID-19 in sewage, together with other researchers from Southern Nevada Water Authority and also Hampton Roads Sanitary District. This is a briefing that's been put together by the Water Research Foundation, which is an organization that our CEO, Diane Taniguchi-Dennis, formerly was on the board of, and Ken serves on the research review group with that. So he will be talking about our efforts, both with Oregon State University, the partnership we have there, as well as the Biobot research we're doing nationally, together with some emerging opportunities that we see, working with OHSU and with the Oregon Health Department to expand this across the state.
When you say, speak of congressional briefing, will he be testifying in some formal way before a panel of committees?
Yes, you know, it's, it's, it's very interesting, in this world we live in, that this will be, it will be virtual.
Okay, yeah.
So it is, everything is virtual now. So that was sent out, that flyer was sent out to 1,400 congressional staff people, and then we reached directly out to the Oregon delegation as well.
Would it be possible for Clean Water Services to post the link that people will be able to listen in on through your social media?
Yes.
And then we, we can cover that as well? Because that's pretty darn exciting. This is cutting-edge, how we're studying our community during these pandemic times.
And that, a couple of the other people that are speaking there, too, are just very, kind of right on the edge of this stuff, and it'll be very interesting. I'll be, we'll be, certainly be putting that on our Facebook page and our Twitter feed, and I'll send a direct link to you all as well. Dr. Williamson is scheduled to come and give you a briefing on the 9th of June, yes, in a work session, to talk about that a little bit more extensively.
And thank you for collaborating with the Washington County Public Health Team, too.
Good.
I'm just going to give you a little bit of an update of what Ken has been up to. So he's been, since this idea started, and since we became part of the international group that's looking at how do we utilize our wastewater for information through the Water Research Foundation, Ken's been working really tiresily here in the state of Oregon. So we currently have our Durham Treatment Facilities Lab set up to receive these samples. So not only are we testing our wastewater treatment plants, we've added sites at a hospital so we could get a count of actual positive cases and to monitor the sewage to get some good correlations. We're also testing the ABC Building and Field Operations, so we can see what's going on with our teams. Oregon State University's Gene Center has already procured the materials to process 600 of the samples. They bought a robotic system, it's pretty neat, they can actually do the testing 24 hours a day now. So they, their processing is about 150 to 200 samples a week. So as you can imagine, it takes some time to do this. So OHA has an interest in testing 80 treatment plants across Oregon for two years, and they're collaborating with Clean Water Services, so we can act as a hub utility to bring the samples into process before they get to the lab for testing. And OHSU is interested in doing a micro sewer shed study on the city of Portland and Lake Oswego, because they want to correlate those that are infected and those that are building immunity also with their wastewater. So there's some really great landmark research happening here in the state of Oregon, and Clean Water Services is at the center of it. So it's pretty engaging and exciting work for us.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other leadership communications or questions, Commissioner Trees?
I just have a, a point for the board agenda.
Yeah.
And that is that on the consent agenda, the approval of the 2020 Emergency Ambulance Service Rate Increase with Metro West. Metro West is a member of West Side Economic Alliance, in good standing, and along with 250 other members, so.
Any other questions or comments on the formal agenda? All righty. Seeing none, we'll move on to the second item on our agenda, Legislative Update. Yay, team, we can see.
Good to see everyone. For the record, Elizabeth Mazara Myers here, as your Government Relations Director, Chair Harrington, Members of the
Harrington, Members of the Committee. I want to start with a personal note, which is Happy Election Day. In my family, we had to vote before we were allowed to get our driver's licenses. We take it very seriously. So I'm very excited, and it is the beginning of what is this great American tradition of transferring power peacefully. And it's a big deal, and it's very exciting. So Happy Election Day. So on that note, we have a very short update today. This is a little piece of administration. Yesterday afternoon, you received an email from me with a legislative concept worksheet. So the team will be, I don't have it with me today, no need to pull it up right now. I just want to flag it for you. The team will be working with their portfolios to have, for the first time, a county-wide form that we're going to be using to try to streamline our process. And they'll be meeting with each of you as well to see if there's anything that's coming from the Board that we need to be thinking about. In that email is a very, very rough timeline of what we expect to have happen. We'll come back to you with a more formal timeline. So again, not putting it on the record today, just giving you a heads up that that email is in your inbox. The other note I'd like to share is that we did some outreach in the last couple of days with our regional partners, City of Portland, Clackamas County, Multnomah County. We're going to be meeting with our federal lobbyists this afternoon to talk about whether there's an opportunity for us to do some federal lobbying for the, in the Senate on the bill that's moved over from the House on state and local dollars. So we'll know more about that this afternoon, and if there's a report, we'll provide it to you. It does seem that the dollars that were given were limited both in amount and in how they can be used. We need more flexible dollars. We need revenue replacement. So we're going to be talking about how we can, as a region, approach the federal delegation and beyond. That is my update. I'm happy to take questions before we turn over to state issues.
Thank you for that worksheet. I think that's a really great start.
Great, thank you. And we'll say this, it is very thorough. And so, you know, we may pare it down as time goes on, but we wanted to really provide a robust opportunity for departments to bring forward their ideas and hopefully help us build a really thoughtful legislative strategy. So thank you. Okay, I think Paige is up next. You're on mute.
You think I would manage the technological parts? Sorry about that, guys. Thank you, Elizabeth, and good morning, Chair and Commissioners. Today, I want to give you just a brief update of the lay of the land for the state legislature, given that we are anticipating the May state revenue forecast tomorrow and how that ties into the legislative days that are beginning on Friday. So regarding the revenue forecast, as you recall, the governor announced on May 11 that she had directed state agencies to complete a planning exercise to address a budget shortfall. And all state agencies submitted plans that equals a 17% reduction for the upcoming fiscal year, which is very significant. And so, given that, I wanted to share three messages that most agencies are pushing out. And these are in your memo as well that we sent out yesterday. So just bottom line, knowing that the decisions about cuts are not made yet. Two, balancing the budget would be a long process, and informed not only by tomorrow's revenue forecast, but the September revenue forecast as well. And then three, that all agencies are using very empathetic language in their presentations about their budgets, and they are all working really hard to minimize impacts on staff and on the people they serve. I was able to have a conversation with one of our Ways and Means Tri-Chairs, who made me feel a lot better yesterday about some of the drastic cuts, noting that there is still some funds to move around. So in short, your G R. team is certainly worried about cuts that may impact our organization, but we will update your Board as we move through the budget process and won't speculate too much just yet. The good news is that we are at the table in these revenue conversations, which brings us to legislative days. So generally, legislative days are sort of a foreshadowing of the session to come, especially after a short session like we had, and what was left on the table, what folks are starting to think about for the 2021 session. And we, of course, anticipate that these May legislative days will have some of that conversation as well, but also, of course, emphasizing COVID-19 impacts and responses. The legislative day's hearings will be online only and lasting right at two weeks rather than the normal three days to allow for accommodating this virtual set of meetings, which, much like with this Board, is pretty unprecedented. So some good news for legislative days next week is that Washington County is at the table. There is two committee hearings that I want to just flag for you that we'll have staff presenting at. The first is, as you may recall, our legislatively adopted priorities for the 2020 short session included an ask for statewide developmental disabilities programs. Any further cuts to these areas could have significant impacts to Washington County. It looks like your video has gone away. I can't see you, but I'm going to send you guys can still hear me.
Yes.
So the takeaway is, there's more detail in your memo for this week, but the takeaway is that within the state agency, D H S, the Office of Developmental Disability Service is taking a particularly severe hit. So to that end, I am thrilled that we have one of our own developmental disability program managers from Washington County on the docket, both in the House and the Senate Committees, to testify about how COVID-19 has impacted these operations and why providing these services are so critical during this time. And we're working on that in close coordination with our association, our statewide association for mental health and disability services. And then the second committee that we'll have some presence at is Tricia Martel, our Public Health Division Manager, who has continued to do outstanding work. Multnomah County and Washington County are going to be presenting together with a CARES Act update and on ramps to help some of our underrepresented communities be lifted up and experience economic and health success. So Multnomah County is going to cover Black Indigenous and other community of color organizations or groups, excuse me. And Washington County is going to focus on the Latinx population, including migrant farm workers. So I am working with Tricia to provide her written testimony, and she will be discussing some of, you know, the conversations we've all had around why our Latinx population has been disproportionately impacted and the work that we're doing to prevent outbreaks in our migrant farm workers communities. So that's all I have today. I wanted to assure you that Washington County will be well represented in Salem over the next couple of weeks. And since legislative days are going on for this extended period of time, we will certainly let your Board know if there are opportunities or needs that we have from you for advocacy. And otherwise, we will update you as legislative days progress and after they end on what we expect to happen next. So thank you.
And before I turn it over to Erin, what I, I guess the part I wanted to highlight from Paige's presentation is that the testimony that was, is going to be given is invited testimony. So Washington County is now at the table, being invited to provide our perspective, and I think that's a very big deal. So good work, team. And Erin, you're next.
Thank you. Good morning, Board. Just, Paige sold about half a mile talking point, so I'm just going to remind you that the revenue forecast for the state is due to come out tomorrow morning at 9:00 A. M. We are letting Jack do the most of the analysis related to the impacts to Washington County's budget from what we see out of the revenue forecast, but as Paige stated, it is not the final deciding factor for the state right now about what they will be doing with their budgets. They'll also more than likely be looking to the September revenue forecast after the state starts reopening to see if there is, what the long-term prognosis of the COVID's impact on the state revenues are. We'll be watching that carefully as well as we go into legislative days, but letting Jack take the lead because he is the expert on the budget, as you all know from your budget hearings the last week and a half. And with that, I think any of us would be happy to take any questions about any matters that are on your mind.
Yeah, Mr. Willie.
Thanks for that update. In regards to the revenue forecast that's coming out tomorrow, everybody seems to, it seems like there's, but I haven't heard this, but it seems like everybody tries to get ahead of this game and make a guess as to how much the shortfall is going to be. So what are you hearing about that, I guess, is one of them. And then the other is, it seems to me that generally, these are very conservative estimates. And so I'm not sure, I guess I'm not sure if I take it at face value. So how much flex do we have in this projection to, from, the projection to reality, I guess?
Well, I'll say this. Typically, the May revenue forecast is a big deal, and it really does set the tone for how we think about what's going to happen in the coming year. It has been made really clear that the September revenue forecast is going to be where the state is really looking. So even though there will be likely some kind of budget maneuvering happening, really, everyone is saying, just take a deep breath and wait till September. So what I would say is, take a deep breath, and we'll wait till September. Jack will give us a good readout on it, and I think you'll all make the best budget decisions with the information you have. And then we will be nimble, which is my new favorite word, we'll be nimble, when September comes. Yeah. Erin, Paige, Jajit, anything to add?
The only thing that I'd add to that is, we have been hearing it will be a significant shortfall from where they are expecting to be normally in May. And it does have an impact on how the state budget's based on the timelines that state agencies have to get their budgets in for the next biennium. And so it's, I think that Elizabeth is correct that September will have a greater impact on what the governor assesses her budget will be for the remainder of this biennium as far as cuts will be. But this is kind of the red flag that they're going to fly in the air for right now, kind of justifying why they went through the intellectual exercise of a 17% cut for the remainder of the biennium. And that will be adjusted probably in September. If there are needs for the budget to change, that would have to happen in a special session or in the long session, just because of some of those rules related to who's in charge of the actual final budget. Or if they want to flex across agencies instead of just doing a straight cut, which is all the governor can really do. I think that, yes, they tend to be a little bit more conservative, but I think right now, the unknowns are huge, and so it will probably sound more drastic, which is why they want to wait until September with that. But it does have impacts on how we budget. It also has impacts on how the state perceives their budget. And so that's why May is usually such a, in normal times, is such a big deal as far as reading what the next biennium will look like and kind of triggering our lobbying efforts around the state's budget that impacts our budget.
I'd like to add that here locally. Here locally, we're hearing, or at least I'm hearing, a lot of angst with regard to the state budget and impact for school funding. We know through the Student Success Act that the corporate activities tax was a revenue source for that. Our local school districts did a lot of work to gather information from our community in order to fulfill the state legislature's obligations around the Student Success Act. And we know that with the tremendous impact of this coronavirus and the ensuing recession with unemployment, that that has an impact on income tax revenue and therefore puts pressure on the funding sources for education. And so our, I've talked to a few different school board members over the last month and a half, and they've been bracing. And I don't envy them. I think being a school district board member is one of the hardest elected official positions here in our whole state, and I am grateful for each and every one of them for running and doing the hard work to navigate through education funding in good times as well as bad, and this is really tough time. So what else have we got?
That's all I've got. Any questions? Great, it's nice to see everyone.
Thank you. Thank you, team. Appreciate all the great work.
Good to see you.
You've been keeping us very well informed of local, state, and federal. So thank you very much. We know you've been very busy working on our behalf, and we're grateful for it. Take care.
I think it should be noted, Jajit is the strong silent type today.
Yeah.
So he's there visually, but doesn't have anything to say.
No baseball cap.
No baseball cap.
That's incorrect. I actually do have something to say.
Had to call you out to get it, didn't I?
Of course. Just wanted to say that, you know, you're looking mighty fine there on the Board this afternoon.
Thank you. We're going to move on to the next item on the agenda. We've changed the order slightly. We're going to move on to our COVID-19 update, and as always, we welcome our Expert Director of Health and Human Services and the Board's connection with the Emergency Operations Center.
Welcome.
Good morning, Chair Harrington and Board. I think I'm messing up the order a little bit this afternoon because you had a whole series of updates, but.
And we'll do them.
Yeah, yeah. So hopefully, this will work okay. But so I don't, do you want to kick it off, Steve? Okay. So what I wanted to talk to you about, so this morning at the actual presentation, I'll do a report on the progress towards reopening, and then I'm going to focus on a few areas that we've been really highlighting. So the work that we're doing around business assistance and helping businesses prepare for the reopening, some work that we're doing with farm workers, and also homeless encampments. So that's going to be the presentation at 10:00.
We have awesome sound effects with our audio.
I don't think that was me.
So.
That was kind of scary.
I was thinking more the Wizard of Oz and his big balls of fire that are there.
So I see there's a new note up here, too. So what I wanted to bring up this morning is the timeline for reopening so that you would have some opportunity for discussion before the Board meeting, if you want. So what we're planning as of this morning, we're on target with all of our prerequisites. We have signed the O P H I contract, which is the contract that we're using to hire the case, the contact tracers, case investigators, staff that will support isolation and quarantine, so that whole bucket of work. That contract has been signed. They already have many applicants. I heard yesterday, I heard one person say 300, and then an hour later, I heard 400 applicants. So that's filling up very quickly. Their goal in the contract was to have the first team, so that's the first 30, 30 new staff members hired by May 22nd. The other contract is the Express Healthcare Professionals Contract, which is the contract where the nurses will be hired. And I think my understanding is that should be signed today, hopefully. It got hung up in our E C A T. somewhere, but that should be signed today. And the last time we heard from healthcare, the healthcare professionals, they had 23 nurses already identified, more than that. And so, so that's all good news. So that means we potentially, if there's no snags between now and Friday, would have the staff, the initial staff needed for reopening on May 22nd. So our intent, and this is our consultation, I think, with you, our intent would then be to submit the application to O H A on May 22nd, this Friday. So, but what I want to say is that that does not mean we're ready to open on May 22nd. That means we have enough staff, we feel confident that the following week, we could get those staff onboarded and trained. And so our target would be then June 1st, Monday, June 1st, is the opening. So it's a little less than two weeks from now. So that's, that's the update that I wanted to provide and give you an opportunity to ask questions. That my understanding is Clackamas County is on a very similar timeline. They are planning to submit their application to O H A on May 22nd. There's a couple of prerequisites that they still seem to be uncertain about, so we'll see if they stick to that timeline. But their reopening timeline is similar to us. It would be June 1st, at least as of yesterday afternoon. All that can change in a heartbeat, right? But, and Multnomah County is still, does not have a date set to submit their application or reopen.
Commissioner Treese?
Thank you, Marnie, for your report. My question is, if we submit the application on the 22nd, have the opportunity. My question is, if we submit the application on the 22nd, have the opportunity to, is the opportunity to reopen once we have the approval from the state at our discretion? My point being that if there is any glitches in between the time the application is approved, and we want to make sure all of our contact tracers, everybody are in line, it is our discretion as a county, as when the reopening occurs after we have the approval, correct?
That's my understanding, yes.
Thank you.
I have two questions. I've always assumed that, because we do public health and our colleagues in the cities do not, that we set the standards for the opening and how things would transpire. I heard questions and comments about, well, we'll reopen certain things and we, our emergency declaration, your emergency, meaning our county, only applied to the unincorporated and rural areas, didn't apply to the cities. Help me out with a message, because I think I'm right in terms of that we are the health authority for the county.
Yes. So I think the first important step is that the governor have an executive order that we're following. And then counties have to meet the prerequisites, and then we can submit an application to the governor's office and to OHA. Both have to approve the reopening plan, and it's approved for the county. And yes, Brad might be able to talk a little bit more about the legal nuances, but the state of Oregon delegates the health authority to the county level. So you are the board. The Board of County Commissioners is our Board of Health, so you are, you and, I'll let you, you can probably say this better, I still get Washington.
Marnie's on the right track. We are the, the county is the public health authority for the entire county. And she is correct as well, in saying, when you look at the governor's executive order, it is incumbent on the county to determine whether we are in Phase 1, and it's not a city responsibility. So I know there is some confusion out there.
Which is separate. Our emergency declaration applies to all unincorporated areas. So those are the areas outside of cities, so the urban unincorporated areas and the rural areas. That's the emergency order that you referenced. Reopening is entirely different. It's under our public health authority as the Board of Commissioners for the entire county.
And I think even when we move into Phase 1, we would want to maintain the emergency order, because that allows us to do certain things, like some of the purchasing rules that we can use to do things quickly. For example, we, because we had the emergency order in process, we didn't have to do the normal process of doing an RFA to identify who would do the contract tracing, which could have taken weeks, six or eight weeks. So we were able to get information from, you know, a few different places without going through that really long process. That's an example of why we would still want to have those emergency orders, even though we are moving into Phase 1. They're two separate things.
I have another question, but just to repeat what I just said. My messaging is that we're the public health authority. It's both our responsibility and our authority to make that determination. And there could be some local city ordinance, maybe they can open their dog park, or they can do whatever they need to do. Still, the decision has to rest with us, following the governor's orders. Is my messaging wrong at all?
That's correct. I think one of the areas yesterday I heard may be some confusion is that the city, as an organization, can determine their opening up plan as an organization. So their EOCs may be looking at, you know, can we open up City Hall? What can we do with Public Works? And maybe, perhaps that's where some of the confusion is coming.
My second question, I got a call on the way in today from a volunteer and another organization that said that they would like to be a contact tracer. Apparently, there's a lot of them who'd like to do that. This is no cost to the county, I mean, they're volunteers. And we're told that you were not looking for any volunteers, and if you did, they would have to be bilingual. Is that correct? I said I would ask.
That's not exactly the message. So we have a website where we've been referring people, and it's on our website, but I'll send it out to all of you, because we're also, I'll also send you the new website, or not website, but link, so that people can apply for the contact tracers. But there is a link to if you wanted to be a volunteer, or a healthcare worker, or a contact tracer, and it goes to the state. And people can, I don't know if people can actually volunteer, if there's something separate, but, you know, I suppose they could get hired and say, I don't need to be paid. I'll have to check on that. But there is a link where people who are interested in these roles, or, and it's broader than Washington County, can apply, and then they get sorted to the appropriate county. So I'm not sure why they were told that.
Any other commissioner questions or comments? I have a question. But first, I'll reiterate that our reopening is guided by the public health science and not politics. And I thank you and the whole Washington County team for putting together communication resources, the newest dashboard that identifies the state of affairs with all the prerequisites, and really where we stand, and making the reopening plan available, so on and so forth. My question to you is, how else can we help support the team?
You know, I feel very supported by this board. I feel like you have always wanted to understand the public health science and wanted to understand the process. And even when you're frustrated if things are taking longer than you want, you ask questions, you listen to understand, and I think our team feels supported. So just hang in there with us and keep sharing those messages that, as you've been doing through your own communication channels. I think that that's really important.
Thank you. I'll just share with my colleagues that I have never known so much anger in our community as I have felt over these last four days now. It's been incredibly painful. And I remain committed to support our team, and will do whatever it takes. I am concerned that if we follow through on this recommendation, our team is making a recommendation that we submit an application for reopening, but our ability to reopen is reliant upon two things, I think. One, which has been mentioned, and that is having all of the team members onboard, trained and ready. I believe there's a second thing, and that is that our community case numbers, with regard to hospitalization especially, have to remain solid. And I don't know where we stand on that, particularly as folks, and I can identify with this, I want to get out and about. I want to be able to travel and see my friends and socialize again. But I'm concerned that if we put through the application, we get the team onboard, but our community numbers turn, that despite our best efforts, we won't be able to reopen. Do you have any thoughts on that?
So right now, our hospitalization and case numbers are still within, we've met those requirements and continue to meet those requirements. And we, you know, that's why I said it's our intent to submit the application on May 22nd. If something happens between now and then with either the contact tracing momentum and getting people onboard, recruited, hired, or if our numbers are going above, we are not going to turn in an application that we know wouldn't be successful. So if our numbers are too high, if there's some spike in hospitalization or case numbers for some reason, if there's a reason that we know we wouldn't be successful in our application, we'll let you know that we are holding back for X, Y, or Z reason.
Is there quite a bit of buffer on that with regard to those numbers? I mean, would it take a lot to tip the scale? I haven't looked.
I wouldn't anticipate, and I am going to show on the presentation today, but there's nothing that's indicating that we need to be worried that we would not meet those standards, prerequisites.
Thank you, that's very helpful.
Sure.
So are folks comfortable with this recommendation being highlighted in our business meeting and said about that way? Because there will be additional public pressure with what we've, what I have experienced over the last week with the Clackamas County Board speaking very publicly about setting forward on their path for application of next Friday. I know that there will be continued misunderstanding and especially political pressure applied to us. And I just want to make sure that you're all prepared for that. Because I certainly wasn't prepared for the flood between reopening and elections and just the increased hatred over the last couple of years, all coming together in like a perfect storm over the last few days.
To your comment, those of us who are, I guess, out campaigning virtually, I told you, there's a lot of angry people. I've been hearing it in volume, so this isn't any big surprise. But the two common questions that remain that maybe you can cover during your presentation.
Could you speak a little louder? It's hard to hear you.
Almost got in my mouth. I know I have a quiet voice, I'm sorry. The two most common questions that I keep getting asked, that I think I try to handle, but maybe not very well, is why would the governor be able to give such a detailed plan, and yet we can't? And why were we not at least anticipating the contact tracer being a big issue? And my response has been, but whatever your response has been, is one, if somebody can do detailed analysis, if they're the one making the plan, we're the ones following, so we're a step behind, we're not leading. And so it's easier to make plans if you're the one doing it. In regard to the numbers and why we didn't anticipate, we didn't know what the numbers were going to be. Again, we're not leading, we're following. And so if my message is wrong, okay, I mean, I'm taking my lashes like everybody else. But that seems to be, if you could do it during your presentation, people are still saying, you were asleep at the switch. Now, we know we weren't, but why didn't you do those things? I'm just telling you what I'm hearing, yeah.
Right. We've been hearing that, too, and I think, you know, to Chair Harrington's point, people are in pain. And I understand that. People have lost their jobs. People have gone without incomes for a couple of months now, and they don't have the cushion to absorb, you know, not getting an income. They've lost their health insurance. But, you know, the flip side is people have died. And, you know, if we don't get this right, if we don't plan this well and get this right, we will see more cases and more people will die. And so we were, we were a part of the team with OHA. We have a health, we have three health officers, brilliant health officers in the metro area that lead the state, that the state consults with, who were sitting alongside as we were making the plans for how we would reopen. So it would be dishonest to say that we weren't involved in those conversations. We were involved in those conversations, but those conversations also evolved over time. Is the state going to hire the contact tracers? Are the local counties going to hire the contact tracers? Once those plans were finalized, within two weeks, we had our plan in place. And within a few days later, we had a contract in place to hire the contact tracers. We weren't sitting around waiting for the state. We were working on this since early April. We've been working on this. It is easy if you're a small county who's had 20 cases since February, and you need to hire one person to do contact tracing. That's an easy plan. Sorry, but that's an easy plan. To figure out how we're going to manage thousands of people who need to have contact tracing, daily monitoring, they're going to go back and forth between just being monitored to developing symptoms, to now they're a case, to manage all that, to ensure that they comply with isolation and quarantine, to ensure that they are able to receive the services that they need when they're in isolation and quarantine, because it will be entire families now. All of that planning does take a little bit of time. And, you know, to double your workforce in, you know, really, less than three, four weeks, that's a pretty darn amazing accomplishment. And I think that we all, and this is what I would ask you, can help message, that's an amazing accomplishment that our staff have worked really hard. And I know that there's some mayors that don't believe that that's happened, but I'll tell you, they have been working 12, 13, 14-hour days, including weekends, to get this plan in place. So I think I'm getting to the point of feeling, I absolutely understand the pain that our residents are feeling, and that they want to reopen, that they need their jobs back. I get that. I know that that, I mean, my family has been impacted. We've lost income. My daughter lost her job. So I understand that pain, but we also, we're the health authority. It's our role to make sure that our residents can move into Phase 1 safely and as healthy as possible.
I'd also like to add to that, that we are, in Washington County, we have another unique
factor. It's not totally unique, but we, our Latinx community has been inordinately affected by this. And I know that that has, in turn, affected the hiring of our contact tracers, the complexity of that, those hires. So I want to remind all of us that it's our responsibility to make sure that we address that issue, and that we take that into consideration as we put these people to work. So that's another piece.
Yes, I think the metro area, because of our size and complexity, it is much different than when you're in a small rural county. And you'll see, if you, you know, look, other than Polk County, the counties that haven't reopened are the larger population centers of the state. So Washington County is not unique in not, you know, being, not moving into Phase 1. We're not unique in that. If you look at the population size, it was the small counties that were all ready to go, the counties with very few cases compared to the metro counties. And I'm including Marion County in that.
Commissioner Whaley?
Yeah, and I want to say that, for the most part, we have been dealing with misinformation, and then in the lack of a firm answer, they made up the answer. And what I'm referring to there is, there was conversation early on that we weren't going to reopen until mid-June. I think that incited additional angst and obviously anger. The fact that we are now looking at potentially doing it this Friday, I think that will help settle down a lot of that angst out there when things... settle down a lot of that angst out there when things become a little bit more clear. I'd like to add, though, that it's going to put additional pressure on the group that is managing the CARES money and what we do with that, because that's the second thing, second largest complaint I get is what is taking so long to get that money on the street? And I would like to encourage that group to make, they don't have to make the entire decision before they roll it out. Certainly with the reopening potential coming down the pike, it's going to be very important we provide some money to our business community to help them with that reopening, because if they've been closed for two months, they probably don't have money available to really make the modifications to their businesses and possibly inventory or supplies that they're going to need to make that reopening and certainly to sanitize their environment and all of that. So we still have.
Could I correct something here?
Okay.
There is no group, there is no other group. The Board of Commissioners is the group.
Well, I was referring to the group that is going to bring it to the board. Okay? So we are waiting in the wings while that group makes that decision. And that's what I'm encouraging, that decision to be moved along at a little bit more rapid pace, because again, we could put that money into play very quickly from the business side of things if we were given the green light or at least an instance of what that looks like. And I'm not trying to put more pressure on you or stir the pot here, but I'm just saying that it is a fact of the matter that we, there are some of our businesses that are going to be able to reopen but not be able to reopen because they don't have the financial assistance to do it.
Madam Chair, I'd like to be clear in where we are on this. What I've been communicating with my counterpart in Clackamas County, they are, as we are right now, talking about submitting their application on Friday. And so I want to be clear that this, according to the plan, is the consultation with the Board prior to submission, so that if there are any objections, they should be voiced now, because we, everything being equal, intend to have our application ready to be submitted on Friday.
I support our team and our team's recommendation.
Thank you.
I do too.
Commissioner Roy.
Yep.
Thank you.
And I thank you.
We will keep you posted, we will advise you when it goes in, so you're aware.
This Friday.
This Friday is the goal, yes.
Can I make one other recommendation? And that is it's not so much that people, again, this is what I'm hearing, and this is maybe Commissioner Willie's comment as well, that people are unwilling to understand and work with us. Maybe our messaging has not been as sympathetic and empathetic to them. I mean, you were talking about your daughter, that's a great story, because people say, okay, I understand you feel my pain as well, but frankly, and I'll point this at me, look at me and say, well, you know, I haven't seen you changing a lot. I mean, you're still serving in government, you're still getting paid, everything's going on. You know, how do you feel about it? And of course, my story is, well, I'm a small business and we've shut down for the most part too. So they're looking for us to just show a good deal of compassion. I don't think they're, I find the anger comes down when they feel like, you know, we're with it and to rowboat with them when we're not there. It's just a suggestion, I mean, stories are really powerful.
I think that's, I think that that is helpful. And, you know, I recognize, and even with my daughter, I talk to her and I say, you are extremely privileged. You know, she has a lot that other people in her situation don't have. And so we, you know, we see, and our public health team in particular, they see the pain every day, because they see the pain of people that have lost their jobs and are sick or in the hospital. And I think, as Commissioner Treese pointed out, our Latinx community has been particularly impacted by this, both from the economic impact as well as the illness itself. They have, they are in a lot of those positions where they did lose wages and they don't have vacation pay and sick pay and they don't necessarily have health insurance that follows them when they lose that. So we do see and understand the pain and that's why we, as much as anybody want, think, we want to move into Phase One, but we have to do it in a way that doesn't contribute to more death. There will be more illness and there will be deaths, but we want to minimize that and mitigate that as much as possible. So I know it's frustrating.
Well, I'm not going to repeat all of, I mean, much has been said, I think the only thing I would add is, we're still trying to understand what this virus does. There's concern now that this is going to be, that once you have it, it's a chronic problem, you're going to have chronic health issues for the rest of your life. We've come to realize that this is nothing like the conventional flu or common cold. And there's serious cardiovascular issues, blood clotting, heart issues, brain issues. This is really a serious, and so aside from the death part, which is the ultimate price, obviously, that people pay, but there's serious possible health consequences for people in the long run and in the short term. And spending time in a ventilator has often been really an effective death sentence as well. So it's a miracle when people survive that. And again, there's chronic issues that are attached to that, just in terms of, aside from the health cause, the health problems chronically by the virus is the issues caused physically by being in a state of suspended anesthesia and a ventilator for weeks has profound physical effects. So this is no trifling matter. And we're just in this county alone, we're looking at 600, what's the number now, 600 and something?
Yes.
And 15 deaths. But I mean, that's, those are all families that could have long-term physical, mental health issues. And then, of course, there's the mental health side of things. So this is not a trifling public health thing. And it's kind of hard to be thinking about doing business and having a really great business environment when we've got that kind of epidemic going on. So I just see the two as intimately intertwined, and we're not going to solve one without addressing the other. And there's no point in talking about which is worse. The pain is intense in both cases and we just have to deal with it in a very comprehensive way. And ultimately, that's why we get paid the big bucks here on the Board, just to take the heat, right? Harry Truman says, you know, if you can't take the heat in the kitchen, then don't be here, so.
And as you requested, Dr. Christina Baumann and Dr. Anne Lofer, I think I'm pronouncing her name correctly, will be here next week at the Board Meeting to talk about, from the clinical perspective, the aspects of this disease and also share a little bit more about the OHSU testing study. So that's a glimpse into next week.
I'd like to make one more quick comment, and that is just, again, a reminder that we were the first county to have a case. We, our escalation rate preceded the others around the state. So our staff has been working at a pace that has been different than other organizations around the state. And I just want to put that out there as a reminder that our situation has been different than even the other counties in our tri-county area.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. With that, we will adjourn our work session for the moment and reconvene into our regular Board Meeting. And then after our Board Meeting, depending upon how long that goes, we have a choice. We can either, if it's a short meeting, because the agenda's pretty darn short, we could reconvene right after that meeting and pick right up if staff is ready for that, or we could reconvene at 1:00.
Well, we would have to move it around because we have outside speakers coming for the item at 1:00.
Yep.
So we can see if we can pull up some of the other items if we have the time.
Yeah, let's do it.
Great. Otherwise, we'll continue on with our marathon extended work session. So let's see what we can advance or not. So we'll continue on and reconvene in our Board Meeting at 10:00. Thank you.
Oops, I'm sorry, Steve.
Thank you Chair Harrington, Commissioner Willie, Commissioner Rogers, Commissioner Trese, Vice Chair Scoughton, Chair Harrington.
Of the work, the board meeting, both items have been pulled. Item 5A has been pulled and item 5B has been pulled. Therefore, we have zero items under the action section of our agenda today.
Chair, 5B is pulled because we've already done that work, correct?
Yes.
I just wanted to point that out.
Yep, that's great.
I will, I will tell the extra meeting last week.
Yes.
University meeting Friday to expedite.
Yep. And also on the consent agenda, I just want to make sure everyone knows that under item B, that we have added links to the bid awards. So the other thing, we're going to mix it up a little bit today. Tuesday, May 19th, it's election day. And given that we are living in very interesting times with this COVID virus, we have a lot of changes. Our elections team has tried to accommodate both the needs of this virus to keep all of our voters safe as well as ensure that our community has information as quickly as possible. I asked our county administrative officer if he and the elections team could fill us all in on the activities of later today with regard to elections.
Thank you Chair. Margaret Garza and Miki Quai are here and can give us an update from elections.
Thank you.
Chair Harrington and fellow board members. Just to let you know, we will conduct the election night results tonight as we have in previous years. We'll begin election night reporting at 8 o'clock and hope to continue reporting on an hourly basis thereafter. And we did also, there was a question that was asked earlier in reference to Clackamas County. We have spoken to Clackamas County. They have opted to give one count at 8 o'clock tonight and also then do a subsequent at tomorrow on the 20th at noon and then at 5:00. Yep. Any other questions about election night reporting?
Could I, could I ask you a question? Has that, has Clackamas County ever done that before? This is the first time, and this is all COVID related.
From our understanding, this is the first time that's happened. We also had the ability to check with Multnomah County. They will follow suit with what we've done in the past. And so they will continue, they will also report at 8 o'clock and continue to report throughout the night.
Thank you.
Yes.
I'd just like to amplify a couple of things. I really appreciate the extra effort that our elections team has taken to process all of the ballots, to validate the signatures involves a lot of short-term temporary hires. I think it's about 70 people. Last week in our work session, you brought pictures. It's available in our work session packet of May 12th. So folks can see the extra care that was taken to ensure that all of the folks who process our ballots were safe and practicing physical distancing. I also want to thank our CAO for taking my call Saturday night when I was alerted that the signage that we had on one of our buildings to make sure all of our community members knew or were informed that our elections office had moved to another location. Apparently, the, between the banner on the building and the sandwich board, some folks were seemingly discouraged from using the mail slot in that building. And you and the team acted very quickly to remove that signage. And so it was very clear when I went and visited the building again on Sunday that it was an official ballot drop site and that folks could drop their ballot into the slot. So thank you. I know you've also opened the elections office for customer service Thursday, Friday, Monday, and again today. And I really appreciate your doing so so that everyone has their needs if they had a misplaced ballot or had other questions.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions from commissioners? Thank you, and we look forward to all those results this evening.
Thank you.
Take care, be safe.
I think the decisions we made last year about relocating the elections office and acquiring that additional equipment that was needed makes us look pretty visionary. Although, we had no idea, but it was certainly needed and we followed through on that, and I'm glad we did.
All right, the next item on our agenda is oral communications. Board clerk, do we have anyone signed up to address the board?
Yes, we do, Madam Chair. We have two people signed up to testify. The first is Mr. Dale Feek, so I will allow him to talk momentarily for you. Dale, can you hear us?
I, I just did, I unmuted. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, Chair Catherine Harrington and esteemed commissioners. I'm Dale Feek, Chair of the Washington County Citizen Action Network. I sent you an email, included in that email was reference to a Zoom and the other was New York's Forward. I want to talk just briefly about that because you have the document. Please read it. The Zoom, there's a little bit of problem with me, maybe for other people. And I want to let you know, I've been working with Kathy Jacoby and Philip Bradford, and I will hopefully be working with you, Ken Moss, about that. It's very important that us as citizens and people that want to make public comment can easily log in, do that, and do so. So anyway, I'll, I'll be working with those people. Hopefully, I'll get to know you, Ken Moss, as you take over as clerk, county clerk. I just participated in a national call for the Center for Health and Environmental Justice. That's Lois Gibbs Group. She's listed on the Washington County Citizen Action Network as a participant group, a national organization. It's very good. I hope other people listening to this will join Washington County Citizen Action Network, get on our webpage and learn, learn and interact based upon the actions that we're trying to do.
Testing and the plan for vulnerable populations. We are, we have contracts with federally qualified health centers, Virginia Garcia Memorial Health Center, the Neighborhood Health Center, as well as Metro West Ambulance, who can help us with both the hot spotting, which what that is, is if we see an increase in cases, in particular in congregate settings, that we would have the ability to go in and do rapid testing for large numbers of people, including in congregate settings, it could be both residents and staff. And then we, what we are looking at in our vulnerable populations is a particular focus on our migrant farm workers, our congregate settings, as I just mentioned, is our focus. So that, as you will see, is complete. We have those plans and we're ready to go. The next prerequisite is adequate PPE and a plan for isolation and quarantine. And again, these both are completed. We have a plan for isolation and quarantine. And we also have, our EOC maintains an inventory log and can attest that there is sufficient PPE supply for our first responders. Okay, next, prerequisites continued. So contact tracing, and this one is in progress. We've made a lot of progress that I want to share with you today. But first, I want to remind you, we keep using the term contact tracing because that's what you hear in the national news. It's what's in the governor's prerequisites. But just as a reminder, it's much more than sitting in front of a phone and making a few phone calls. It begins with receiving the report of the positive case and investigating that case within 24 hours. So reaching out, and that is done by the nurses, the case investigation. They begin the process of contact tracing during that investigation, asking where people may have been, who they have come in contact with. And then there's, there's several other conversations because what we know is that you don't get all of the information that you need the first time that you talk to the case. So that's the contact tracing. And then we need to assure that we have the ability to provide for their essential needs because if people have been exposed, the entire family could be placed in quarantine for at least two weeks. If anybody in that family or household becomes symptomatic, then the quarantine process starts over for an additional two weeks. And so you can imagine that people may need help with things like getting groceries, paying rents and mortgages, making sure that their cell phones don't get turned off. So we have plans in place to support all of that as well as this, the plan for contact tracing. Surge staff includes enough staff to manage that. We, we will need to facilitate testing of contacts. Oops, a little typo in there that nobody caught. Daily monitoring, at least daily monitoring of those contacts. And we also will need data analysis because when you're the nurse or the contact tracer and you're dealing with one person at a time, we need those data analysts, the epidemiologists, to step back and look at the data as a whole and tell us what's going on in our community. Are there hotspots? Are there areas that we need to be concerned with? Are there specific populations that we need to focus on more? So all of that will be happening. So, next slide, please. So where are we? What's the progress? So we have made good progress since your approval to move forward with contracting. We have signed contracts with Express Healthcare Professionals, who has identified nurses to join our team in this, in the surge capacity. And we also have signed a contract with Oregon Public Health Institute and the Public Health Institute, which is based in California, for hiring our contact tracers. They have OPHI and PHI together, have committed to identifying, recruiting, and hiring the first two teams, so the first 30 people by May 22nd. Once that happens, the following week, we'll be able to provide training and then we will have a team that is ready to do contact tracing. And if our data remains where it's, where it is, if our prevalence continues to maintain at the low level or even go down further, we will be ready to submit our reopening application to OHA on May 22nd and open the first part of June. Move, when I say open, that's moving into phase one. The recruits that have been identified, we are prioritizing recruits that we receive from the community-based organizations in Washington County because 30% from the community-based organizations in Washington County because 30% of our contact tracing staff will need to be bilingual. And then, we are still waiting for state training protocols and the state database. And we talked a little bit last week about the average, when we interview a new case, on average, there are 12 presumptive cases. So that means somebody that was exposed and has symptoms and additionally, another 15 contacts who don't have symptoms. And so you can imagine how quickly the numbers can get into the thousands when you have cases. And those cases don't just stay in one category. They may move from being a contact with no symptoms to a presumptive case who now needs to be treated like a lab-confirmed case, and then they can move to a lab-confirmed case. And so you can see how complex that can get and why it's so important, especially in the metropolitan area in Washington County, Multnomah, Clackamas County, that we do need the state database in order to really be able to manage and track all these thousands of people over time. So I'm going to move on now. So that was a quick rundown of our progress and where we are. We're making great progress. Just to summarize, we do plan to turn in an application to reopen on May 22nd to O H A and the governor's office. That does not mean we're opening on May 22nd. It does not mean we're ready to move into Phase One. But we are turning in the application so that after the following week, when we have our staff trained, we will, if all of the data continues to be in the right direction, we will be prepared to reopen, move into Phase One, the 1st of June. So with that, I'm going to move into some of the focused efforts that we're working on. Today, I wanted to highlight the work we're doing around business outreach and enforcement, migrant farm worker support, and our homeless camp response. So this is a little bit, for me, it's a little bit unusual. It's a sort of, you know, kill with PowerPoint because these are some dense slides coming up. But I wanted you to see all the work that the E O C is doing. So we can go to the next slide. So business outreach and enforcement, they've been working hard to develop an F Q H, F A Q, sorry, F A Q on reopening for our county departments, as well as cities, chambers, and city emergency managers because it's very complex. The governor's orders are not easy to follow. And so we're trying to convert that into something that's easily understood and useful to our own departments, as well as our city partners. We're working to add cloth face covering vendor lists to the workplace guidelines. You may have seen on the reopening page, we do have vendor lists for other P P E, and so we're adding the cloth face coverings to that list. Supporting cultural businesses by providing city chambers with translated COVID posters. Planning to participate, we're finalizing some dates and agendas to participate in a webinar for our community-based organizations regarding the reopening guidance. As you can imagine, they have lots of questions. So we'll provide the guidance and also resources. We're also coordinating to create a translation of a reopening, and I loved this, but support blurb for our businesses to really point them in their preferred languages to the different resources. And then, we also have three webinars planned with the city chambers. We're working with Hillsborough, Sherwood, and Tigard.
Commissioner Trese? There's only three chambers there. Were the others not interested?
We're happy to do with all of the chambers. I know it was offered.
Okay, so they're all aware of this.
There could be more coming onboard over time.
Perfect, thank you.
Those are the three that are on par right now. Yep. So that was really what we're doing to really focus on reopening support. The next slide. So this is really an overview of support that we've been providing ongoing. Yeah, we have to all get our glasses out for this. Sorry, it's a lot. But this is support that's been ongoing since the E O C opened in early March. So we have been doing the bi-weekly coordination calls for employers to share new guidance, resources, provide updates, and answer any questions. And that's been happening since March 20th. We've provided phone line support and resources to businesses since the beginning of the response. We have the webpage for workplace guidance that includes things like F Q H Cs. Information for workplace reopening is now on there. The vetted P P E list that you've seen that came from Business Oregon, and resources for any businesses that need P P E in order to operate. Physical distancing and executive order support has been provided to, we've done mostly phone outreach to unincorporated Washington County. And the city organizations have been providing that educational support to their businesses within their jurisdictions. As you know, the county administrative office developed a business recovery plan with Commissioners Trese and Willie, and developed a grant program for small businesses. And then, the E O C COVID enforcement team has staffed phone lines and emails for the public and employees to report noncompliance. And we've done follow-up education and support to those businesses. It rarely gets to the point of real enforcement. Almost every time when we've called them, they've said, "Oh, okay, we didn't realize we needed to do that," or "Can you help us?" And we provide that kind of assistance.
I'd like to add one other piece to the C A O's office developed business recovery. Included in that was support for businesses who are trying to access funds either at the federal or state level through Work Systems, Inc.
Yes, thank you. And all of that is on the COVID website as well. So I'll move on to migrant farm worker outreach and support. You've heard a bit about this, but just wanted to let you know what is going on as we move towards reopening. So we have been working with community partners, in particular, the Western Washington Farm Workers Association, Washington County Farm Workers Association, Virginia Garcia, Central Cultural, and Salud, along with county staff, have been collaborating. And the plan that's developing ensures that there would be increased access to testing and treatment, including rapid testing as that becomes more available. Work with employers to assess the needs, identify resource, and mitigate the impact to workers, and assist with implementing the state guidance that's come out. We've created educational materials to distribute to the farm workers as they arrive in the camps. We coordinate weekly food deliveries to the camp to assure food access and provide a system for people to connect if they're having difficulty accessing different services. So working with all of those organizations, making sure that we can provide the support to the workers and that they are able to find the resources that they need. We have specifically thought about isolation and quarantine and making sure that we're able to provide housing if people need. Remember, isolation means that you have tested positive or you're a presumptive case, meaning you're a direct contact and you have symptoms. And if you are not sick enough to go into the hospital, but you need a place to rest and recover in isolation, we can use the respite center for that. And then, we're working on assuring that there is quarantine housing either at the respite center or other locations is needed. And then, of course, communication is always an important component of any plan. So working, again, with all of these organizations to assure that both the employers and the seasonal and migrant farm workers receive the information that they need to stay healthy. And then, the last thing that I wanted to give you an update on, and this is relatively new information, we have been receiving a number of calls and concerns regarding an increasing number of homeless people that are living in different encampments. As an example, one of the largest is in Hillsborough, and it has at least 40 campers that are in that location. And so we've been working for the last couple of weeks with Hillsborough, as well as county staff to develop a plan. The solutions that are under development, they're not quite ready, but the solutions that are under development are improving, are really developing a hotel voucher system so that people that are homeless and maybe older, people that are not symptomatic, so they don't really belong at the respite center, but maybe they're older or disabled could have access to hotel rooms. And then, we're also exploring a supported tent site at one of these locations. So supported tent site might look something more like you may have seen in Portland, where we developed the location, we make sure that the tents are all socially physically distanced, that we're providing food access, restrooms, hand washing. So that's what I mean by supported. And we're looking at other services, including syringe exchange services, of course, garbage pickup, those kind of things. Okay. All right, so that was a quick run-through, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Commissioners, any questions or comments, concerns?
When are we at a point where we'll be able to test people who are not symptomatic? Can we get to that point? Is that something we're aspiring to do at some point?
Yeah, I think next week, you're going to hear a little bit about a research study that O H S U is doing, and part of that is some random sampling of people that are not symptomatic. I honestly, I don't know when we're going to get to the point of having enough tests that absolutely everybody that wants to be tested, regardless of symptoms, can be tested. And the same applies to the antibody testing, which is looking to see if you had the infection in the past.
And then, follow-up. Do we have any thoughts about, rather than just generally, in some of the most vulnerable populations, such as our assisted living, et cetera, with respect to asymptomatic testing?
So, part of the hot spotting would be to include asymptomatic testing when we know that there is COVID in the congregate setting. But right now, we're not able to provide, again, asymptomatic testing to everybody living in any congregate setting. So I don't know exactly when that would be available. And I think that the problem with that, that we would have to work through, is how meaningful it would be. So it would tell you, maybe if you went into a congregate setting and you tested everybody and everybody was negative, it would tell you that everybody is negative now. It doesn't tell you had they been exposed four days ago and they're going to become positive, or are they going to be exposed next week and convert. So that's a little bit of the problem. So I think that next week will be really interesting to hear the O H S U study because it's typical to do surveillance where we're testing a large enough percent of the population that we can estimate prevalence based on that. So that's how we do it with influenza every year. We don't test everybody to get a prevalence, but we test a significant number of people and we monitor how many people are entering emergency room with influenza-like symptoms and how many of those test positive. So, but to test an entire population doesn't necessarily, I guess it kind of depends on the purpose of doing that. I don't know if that helps.
I guess the purpose would be to make, I mean, to a degree possible, that in terms of workplace environment, to a degree of the assisted living, or even with the camps, that the farm worker camps, that the people who are going in to do that work or who are there can screen more potentially COVID people so they don't infect those who are who don't have COVID.
Yeah, in those congregate settings. So there definitely will be increased testing in those congregate settings.
Okay, thank you.
Could you remind us, who controls the criteria by which, the guides, who is permitted to get tested or not? Is that O H A? Is it the governor? Is it your decision?
So, there's a few different levels. So the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention has guidance, and as well as Oregon Health Authority have guidance around who can be tested. And the guidance is pretty liberal right now for people that want to be tested. But it also depends on the number of tests that are available, as well as the P P E that's available. Right now, we're not limiting who can be tested, but we're also not out there testing absolutely everybody regardless of symptoms. But we're not limiting. You can talk to your healthcare provider if you want testing, and they will make a recommendation about whether you should have testing. And they can have that conversation on an individual level. If you're asymptomatic and you want testing, they can have a conversation with you to understand why you're wanting the testing, how that will help inform you, whether it's because of, you know, concern around someone in your household or a new job that you're looking for. They can kind of help to guide individuals around whether or not testing would be recommended. But there is no government organization that's currently really limiting who can be tested.
Any other commissioner questions? Commissioner Willie?
Yeah, and we've talked about this previously, certainly to support the chair's concerns about if we open, about having a spike in cases and hospitalizations. So I would like to see us, or I'd like to hear about any kind of a public relations campaign that we have of people were reopening, but let's stay the course. It's going to be equally as important that we maintain our regiment that we've been doing for the last two months through another period of time, and that includes during the reopening. And I can't overemphasize the importance of that, and I'd like us to kind of push that campaign to do that. I don't know if we've got something in place already to do that or not.
So, yes, and, so we will continue to push out messages about the importance of, even in Phase One, there is continued pretty strict guidance on physical distance. So even when bars and restaurants open, it will not be the way it was before. It will include that the restaurants and bars have to ensure that the patrons maintain those six-foot of difference, you know, not within your own household, but between other tables. When we go back to gyms or our personal services, all of that includes guidance that has the physical distancing, the face mask, and increased cleaning and sanitizing. In addition, as individuals, we all should be wearing face coverings when we go out into public, not necessarily outdoors when you're all alone, but when you go into a public space with other people, you do need to wear your face covering, especially if you can't maintain that six-foot of distancing. Hand washing, you heard us say that a lot. It's continuing to be really extremely important. It's one of the most important things that we, as individuals, can do to prevent ourselves from getting sick and to protect our loved ones, our families, and our neighbors. So good hand washing and cleaning, cleaning those touchable surfaces as much as possible. All of that's going to continue to be extremely important as we move into Phase One. And we do have plans to really share those messages, and county administrative public information is helping to amplify that message. So- So, they're helping us to go above what we're able to do at the EOC with our current PIO, our public information staff. So, I think that you will see an amplification of that message. And of course, we need all of you and all of our Zoom listeners to help us to promote that message as well.
And I'm assuming that if we would push out some public relations campaign along those lines, that the COVID cares dollars would cover the cost of that, so that would qualify. So, I guess that's a question to you, Steve.
Yes, we believe it will, and we have work underway to do a media campaign for us to, we're trying to get it to parallel with the reopening, so that we can begin very, doing a very visible messaging campaign to the community.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions, comments, or concerns?
I'm sorry, one thing I should have mentioned, and we will bring outline of that back to the board before we start it, so you'll have the opportunity to see what we're preparing to do.
So, I'd just like to summarize that what we heard during work session, as well as through this presentation, is that the county administrative officer will be submitting an application for reopening later this week, Friday, May 22nd. And when the team signals that all of the contact tracing team is ready, we'll make the decision for reopening, and the hope is to do that. I heard a date of June 1st, results pending.
That's correct. That's, of course, dependent on the governor's approval of our plan.
I'd also like to point out that that is a quick turnaround, in that Memorial Day is part of that five-day work, work time. So, just that, so we're talking about a reopening in four days after the application is submitted.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate the update. Next, we'll move on to public hearings. Today, we have a public hearing from our Land Use and Transportation Department to approve an amendment to the Service District for Lighting, or SDL, equipment for Garden Home Number 147, which is referred to as Piper Ridge. We have Stephen Roberts here, the Director of Land Use and Transportation, for a staff report.
Good morning, Chair. I'm actually going to turn over to Stacia Sheeler. She's our management analyst and program coordinator for SDL. She's joining us on Zoom, and she'll run through the staff report, and then we're happy to answer any questions. Go ahead, Stacia.
Good morning, Chair Harrington and fellow board members. Today's public hearing is being held to amend the current Garden Home SDL assessment area to add 10 additional lots and four additional streetlights. The SDL ordinance requires the county hold a public hearing to amend an already existing assessment area if changes are proposed. All property owners in the Garden Home Assessment Area were notified by mail the week of April 21st of 2020 of today's public hearing. Staff addressed four inquiries from property owners, and all were satisfied with the information provided. There are common concerns related to the developer's financial responsibilities. They were informed the developer is responsible for the cost of installing the new lighting fixtures and any other modifications to existing streetlights to accommodate the development, while the SDL assessment is only related to the energy and ongoing maintenance costs for the fixtures. One written remonstrance was received from Mr. Sean Fogley, who indicated the new lighting would shine onto his property. County staff and PGE have reviewed and visited the area. The light distribution is focused on the street, and because this is a residential area, the fixture height and lighting levels are relatively low. As a result, little if any light spill over onto his property is anticipated. Following the public hearing, staff recommends approval of this amendment to the Garden Home Number 147, Service District for Lighting Assessment Area, to add the Piper Ridge subdivision tax lots and streetlights. I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you for your consideration.
Commissioners, do you have any questions?
How many, yes, please. How many, how many inquiries were there?
There were a total of six.
Six, okay, thank you.
Okay, seeing none, we're going to open a public hearing. Clerk, do we have anyone signed up?
We do not, Madam Chair. As Stacia said, they handled all the inquiries.
Okay, well, seeing no one to testify during the public hearing, we'll close the public hearing.
Move for requested action.
Second. There is a motion and a second to approve the resolution and order for the installation of a street lighting facilities and modification of one existing streetlight in the Garden Home Number 147 assessment area. All those in favor, please vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously five to zero.
Thank you.
As announced earlier, we have no action items on today's agenda. Next, we'll move on to our second oral communication period. Mr. Clerk?
Madam Chair, we have no additional public comment at this time.
We have no one signed up, and no one in the room. Next, we'll move on to board announcements. As usual, I'll announce our next meetings, next Tuesday, May 26th. Next Tuesday, May 26th, we have an afternoon work session at 2:00 PM, followed by an evening board meeting at 6:30 PM. Then, on Wednesday, we have a, quite a long list of public hearings with regard to the various budgets. Each of the service district budgets for Washington County, and then the full county budget itself. So, the public hearing meetings will start at 5:30 PM. We have times certain for different aspects of the evening. 6:30 will be the next public hearing. The first one will be the North Bethany Community Service District for Roads. Then, at 6:30, it'll be the Enhanced Sheriff Patrol District and Urban Road Maintenance District Budget Committee. Then, at 7:30 PM, we have the county public hearing, the county budget. People can sign up to testify. That's posted on our board meeting webpage. And on those budgets, you can also email our finance director, finance underscore director or officer, sorry, I can't remember that detail, at co.washington.or.us. The email address, as well as the phone number, you can find on the notification for the budget meetings. Then, we have the very first two weeks of June, a set of meetings, work session the morning of June 2nd, and our regular board meeting at 10:00. We have a roundtable on Thursday, June 4th, and then the following Tuesday is no business meeting, it is extended work session. Are there any other board announcements today? Seeing none, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously five to zero. Goodbye, folks, stay healthy. Please vote, get your ballot in by 8:00 PM. Bye now. Okay, what are the wishes? You want to take a break?
The work session early start.
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. If you remember, this matter was raised last year for some potential changes to the charter. And a little over a year ago, I provided you a memo outlining that process and some of the legal issues around that. And then the board directed me to come back with more description of the process and to work with Commissioner Trese and Alex Vidal. And to bring it back to the board were some potential changes. And I was directed also to actually come up with some proposed charter amendment language. Again, that is only for discussion purposes and whatever the board wants to do, they certainly can do. But that is, they're outlining in the memo that I provided you two sections that I was directed to look at. And those two sections are the Commissioner Compensation section and the Land Use Ordinance Season section. So I'll go into, so you'll have a decision point and what you want to do. And I'll talk about the two processes that we can go forward with if we want. The first is the Charter Amendment process. And if we want to amend these two sections, we can do two separate ballot titles, two separate amendments. Those would meet the single subject rule, which you only have, you're required to only have one issue in front of the voters in the ballot title. And so that would be the amendment process. When you do that, first we'd file those proposed changes with the clerk and then introduce the, introduce those proposed changes at a board meeting. And then at that meeting, the board would schedule a public hearing no less than 20 days after its introduction. And then the board would have a second meeting where there would be a public hearing. And at the end of that public hearing, the board could adopt the amendments at that time. And we would also propose ballot titles and explanatory statements for those, for that adoption. Or if there was another amendment or change to those proposals, then the public hearing would be continued for at least seven days to consider those changes. And then final action is to place on the amendment revision on the ballot at least 60 days before the election. And so that would be the amendment process where we'd take two separate ballot titles to the board to look at this. The other process would be a revision of the charter. And that's where the board follows the same procedures I just outlined, but then has the additional process of appointing a five-member charter revision committee. And then the committee has 20 days to review the proposed revisions and the county, the commissioner issue report, making a recommendation on the charter revision. So there will be direction from the, to the commission on what they should look at. But the commission has full reign to look at the whole charter and come back with any kind of revision they want. They could agree with your suggestions or disagree with your suggestions or agree to change the whole thing for that matter. So anyway, then that committee.
And quickly, sorry to interrupt. They could take as long as they want.
Yes.
We can't give them any target timeframe to be done or anything like that. Once we start them up, they can run as long as they want.
Right. And, you know, those have taken some time. The last time this happened was in 2008, and there was quite a few charter committee revisions. I don't know if any of you were on that, but I know obviously Roy and Dick were here for those, for that process. And the county did a pretty significant revision to the charter. And, and one of the things that was revised was the charter revision provision of Section 51, which I attached to my memo. And then more recently, we did a charter amendment where we shifted the allocations to Commissioner Districts. That was a single-subject standalone amendment that was put to the voters and approved.
Which, as I understand it, with the results of the Census 2020, which I think the Census date has been pushed to August now, if I'm right. So I would assume that the results of that information would be delayed in coming to us as well. But with the results of that, we have to examine if our Commissioner districts are still in balance or not.
That's correct.
Yeah. So that could happen in 2021, I assume?
I would think that'd be the date. I'll have to go back and look at that provision. But it, yeah, it was, I believe, fairly non-controversial last time we did the redistricting.
Yeah, district, redistricting tends to be non-controversial because there are so many rules, so many rules you have to follow around using borders and whatnot, so.
So the board will have to decide whether they want to do two separate amendments for these two sections or direct a, appoint a charter commission to look at these two sections and other sections. So I attached two different proposed changes to those two sections. And those are at your, on your, in your packet. And so the first one was the amendment to the section involving the Charter Compensation Committee. And that provision basically said that the chair gets paid the salary of a, three-quarters the salary of a circuit court judge, and the commissioners get paid a 25% of that salary. So.
No.
Excuse me.
No, that's not right. It's the 80% of the salary of the circuit court judge.
That's right, 80%. I'm sorry.
And the commissioners are paid 40% of the chair's salary.
That's right. And so, yeah, I didn't have it pop up when I was looking at that. So, anyway, and so the proposal I suggested was that the, it was a mix of what happened in Multnomah County's charter and in the Oregon State statutes regarding the salary commission. So I suggested that the board can appoint a five-member salary commission and that they could then come up with a proposal for adoption by the board for what your salary would be. And so, you know, there's lots of ways you could do it. You can put a lot of description of what the salary commission has to look at and what they consider and what they study, how many hours the commissioners work. But my belief is that the charter is a broad policy document and that if you look at the charter, it is, just lays out broad authorities and broad, broad processes for how to do ordinances. And that if the commission wanted, then the board of commissioners wanted to provide more detail and guidance to the salary commission, they could adopt an ordinance that would tell them exactly what to look at and what to study for that. And so that's, again, just the proposal. And then the, the other one was a more simpler one where they would just strike the whole land use ordinance season provisions. And so there's been, you know, a number of controversies over the year about the land use ordinance season, which has come back from a much earlier charter version where they didn't want to have hearings through the dead of the winter on land use hearings. And so that has caused some difficulty on our processing land use ordinances. So the proposal there would be to strike the whole thing, so. So that's the basic review of what I'm proposing, and I'd be happy to talk about any of those ideas or answer any questions.
Commissioner Trese?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Mr. Wapier, for that, for the work that you've done. We talked, we talked briefly about whether or not this was the right time to bring this up and, or whether or not it should be postponed because of the COVID situation. And I want you to know that I thought about it long and hard, and I'm even more convinced through this disaster situation that we need to have an opportunity for all hands on deck when it comes to our commission. So I asked Mr. Wapier to bring this, to continue on this process and to bring it forward at this particular time. I've, I've talked about this before. We've had discussions about this before. One of the things that has become clear to me isn't just amount, about the, the amount of work that the commission staff does. It also is clear to me that I believe that our communication would be enhanced in a situation where we have more time together. I think that our position, not the chair's position, but the commissioners' position in relationship to other commissioners in the metro area and throughout the state would be enhanced by this as well. And what I mean by that is, I know several of you, all of us, have had experience working with other commissioners from other counties, but my experience has been, well, you hear frequently, well, I know you guys are part-time there, or I know that you don't, you know, you're not, you don't have the bandwidth with staff and with a full-time status that we have. And I feel that that is not appropriate for the size of our, our county, for the constituents that we represent, and for the issues that we deal with on a day-to-day basis. So I am even more committed through this process that we're going through and through the communication with the other counties to bring this issue forward for discussion.
Other commissioners? Any questions, comments?
I'll weigh in too. First of all, there should be two different, separate issues. These are very succinctly different. I'll do the easier one in my mind, and that's the one regarding the land use. That's very archaic. It came about, Alan, you may recall this, from Jim Allison, who was a, he passed away a few years ago, but he was a landowner and advocate out in the Sherwood area. He had some very definite ideas about times of the year things should happen. He didn't want this board at that time to convene in the middle of the night in the dark winter and pass things. So I, that was his opinion. the middle of the night in the dark winter and pass things. So I, that was his opinion. To me, this is a fairly clean proposal, that it should, it doesn't need to be in our, our working ideas today. It's, it's archaic. So I'm all in favor of that. I guess I'm less convinced about the second one. I think that we're going to exclude people from service, certain types of people. You can include others, I understand, but you're going to exclude, I think it's a very volatile issue. I understand what you're saying, but during a time when people are losing jobs and we're talking about increasing salaries, it's not good. But I think that we can debate those issues, which I'm quite willing to do in the public eye at various meetings. And I think it, we can start that process, and we'll let the voters decide what they think is appropriate in terms of elected officials and who they think is best representing them.
Well, I feel like I'm in a little bit of a unique position, because I'm not going to personally benefit from this. And I know that that's really not ultimately what I think decides this for any of our Commissioners. And I don't mean to imply that, that that would. But nonetheless, I'm in that position to do that, so I can truly say I'm looking at this objectively. And I think for all the reasons that you've set out, Commissioner Treese, I think that's, this is time for a county of 600,000 people, it's also Board Directors for Clean Order Services, to be able to be in a place where we've got five full-time Commissioners. We need to be able to cooperate, work with, occasionally compete with our larger sister-county jurisdictions. And I think that, we talked about a billion, billion-plus budget. These relatively small dollars is almost budget dust. But at the very top, from a policymaking standpoint, it's really important that we have full-time Commissioners that can stand equal to any of the other larger jurisdictions. And I think that will benefit and be very cost-effective, actually. I think we'll get a lot of value for, for those salary relatively. And the actual increase is not even the full amount, it's actually the amount beyond what we're already paying. So, which I have often, in recent years, I have found to be a very awkward dollar amount, because we certainly can't say that we're volunteers here. We do more than just collect a small stipend to pay for our gas expenses, that type of thing. But on the other hand, the salary is not really commensurate to the responsibilities and to the, and there's just a lot of people who can't do this work, who can't afford to, to take account of a salary cut and, and given the time commitments, unless there's a commensurate full-time salary to go with that. So for those reasons and all the reasons you've laid out, I would be very supportive of this, and would be happy to endorse it and campaign for it.
Thank you, Commissioner Scott. And one other thing I'd like to add is that when I think about this, I am thinking to the future of the county. We are not, we are not contracting as a county. We're continuing to grow. We're continuing to get larger. When we talk about the Census, we're looking at increased population within each of our districts. So I, I feel that it's very important that we look, as a Commission, right now, to what the future holds for this county, and what the responsibilities are to, that we hold in terms of looking to that future, and having the, attracting people who can do the work, and having them run for office, as well as people, as well as being fair in treating our future Commissioners with, giving them the opportunity to, to stand head-to-head with other Commissioners and to do the work that's necessary.
Commissioner Willey?
Yeah, I would agree with both Commissioner Treese and Scott, and they're just because this conversation has been going on, not at the county level, but certainly at the city level, for several years. My predecessor as Mayor, Tom Hughes, increased the Mayor's compensation from $500 a month to $2,000 a month when he exited the office. It's still at that level. The city councilors, I believe, get $350 a month or something, but they're finding that that is not only difficult to find people who are willing to run for an office that has the demands of city councilors or county Commissioners on basically what has always been defined as a volunteer basis. So with all of that, I would think this is something that we should be seriously considering. I'm, I'm not real tied to how soon this is, but, but again, we are, we are in a process where we've got to run this through some sort of an election process. So I get that it's important we do that. And just for clarification, I guess, Alan, I'm, I'm not sure I heard you correctly. I thought that if it were perceived or defined as minor changes, we didn't have to have the five-committee assignment, but if it was considered major Charter changes, we did. So are we, are we required to have this five-person committee under the changes that have been proposed?
Mr. Willey, members of the Board, no. If you do two separate amendments, then you do not require it to have the Charter Review Committee. And so if you only, if you decide authorizing the look at those two sections and put it together as a revision, which only requires one vote for all the revisions, then that's when you have to do that committee. So if the Board's direction is to put together two separate amendments, then we can just run that through the Board.
Well, that's interesting, okay.
So that's what the recommendation is?
Is that we have two separate amendments?
Yeah.
That would certainly be the simplest way and the most defensible way.
So I'll follow up and sweep and add my comments here. I appreciate the work that's gone into looking at the various setups, such as Multnomah County's Commission, Clackamas County's Commission, and the clear, straightforward proposal on these two items. There, on the land use one, there has been quite an analysis over the years, the pros and cons. Folks can find that through Planning Commission Review as well. I think that the removal of Chapter 10 provides the county with the most flexibility. We continue, we will continue to have a Planning Commission. We will continue to have a work program, because those are systems that work for Washington County, to figure out, given the limited resources, how can we accomplish all of the, the tasks at hand. So I agree with everyone else on the Commission, my four colleagues, to advance that particular Charter item. On the composition and the salaries, not the composition, I misspoke, on Item E, under Chapter 3, the salary basis. I am very well aware of the challenges that my colleagues face with the 40% salary, having been a District Commissioner for Metro, having a very similar pay aspect, and trying to encourage more people to run for these marvelous positions for serving our community, while at the same time knowing that you need to make a living, you need to pay your bills, you need to do the necessary personal planning for your life. It does make it very challenging to attract not only qualified people who are dedicated to serving the public, but also younger people, and also people of color as well. And so, for no other reason than that, but there are many more reasons. I think having a Salary Commission of qualified professionals makes a lot of sense. And I think this proposal blends all of those capabilities together. And as such, I also join many of my other colleagues in being willing to advance that as well. I do have a question now, and that is, given the discussion that we're, we've had here today, it seems that we have a majority of Commissioners that wish to move forward with these two separate items. So that would require that the materials be drawn up and that we get these meetings scheduled. Is there a particular timeframe? Like, if we wanted to put it on the ballot for November, I know that we have to have different materials prepared to the Elections Office by September. We're still in this COVID case, so I want to make sure, particularly if there are surprises over the next few weeks, that we're not putting inordinate pressure, I mean, on your team, Mr. Rappleye in the seat, in the County Council's office, and then your team, Mr. Rhodes, through the County Administrative Office. So does, do you have the bandwidth to work and, and get the materials together and get that scheduled in sometime over the next couple of months?
So, Madam Chair, members of the Board, what we were talking about was potentially a November ballot. And we can, can make those timeframes, and I believe we can do the work. It'll take time out of your agenda as well, though. And again, also, you know, there will be a potential campaign, and so that will take time out of your agenda as well. But yes, we can put all that, all those things together, and we'll work out a timeframe that we can share with you on how that would be rolled out. And so the direction I'm hearing today is to bring both these items as separate amendments, and to follow the process and the Charter Revision. And we'll get those calendars to you together, and I'll work with Commissioner Treese on that, and Mr. Vidal, on how to do that.
And I would like us to just come back through discussion after we get the election results as well, particularly because we have two levies that are on the ballot for tonight, and we, you know, depending upon the, the voter's choice, we may have quite a full plate for November or not, so.
Well, certainly, there'll be more decision points down the road.
Okay. Does the Commission have any other questions or comments, things you want to add? I want to thank Commissioner Treese and your Policy Assistant, Alex Vidal, for working with Mr. Rappleye in continuing to pursue updates to the Charter.
Thank you. And I also want to thank Mr. Rappleye.
All right. That's it on that item. So we've completed another item on our long work session agenda. We do have a lunch break coming up. Are there any topics we want to try and squeeze in before lunch, or would you recommend that we just take a lunch break now and reconvene time certain, 1:00 P.M.?
I'd recommend we take the lunch break now, because we're having to move up staff to do it. We will move up the afternoon, since we've got time there, but we can't get anybody in to do it at this point.
Okay, so starting at 1:00, I assume we'll just follow through with the order. So at 1:00, we'll have the Chief Equity and Inclusion Officer job description with our outside speakers. Then Item 6, Sheriff's Office COVID-19 update. Item 7, COVID-19 impact on Criminal Justice Court system and related concerns. Item 8, Cooperative Libraries' response to COVID update. So COVID is four of our 12 topics today. Then we have five remaining items, three regarding appointments to different Boards and Commissions, then homeless camping, and then a CWS briefing on Moss Street Sanitary Sewer Local Improvement District. And that will round out the agenda for today. Great, great. Thank you very much, everyone. We'll see you at 1:00. Thank you.